Checking, one, two. Checking, one, two, three, four, testing the mic. Wireless checking, there we go, one, two, three, checking and unchecked.
Let me see.
Let's begin. Good afternoon, everybody. Shana Tova. Welcome to our study session, Tikun Olam and Our Climate Chaos. My name is Mark Madras. I will serve as your Holy Blossom Host and Moderator for this session. I'm delighted to see all of you here today in the Mishkan, and I welcome all of you who are watching the program livestreamed. This promises to be a most interesting session. I'm especially delighted to welcome our guest speaker, Counselor Dr. Diane Sacks, and very much look forward to learning from her this afternoon, as I am sure all of you do. Counselor Sacks is eminently qualified to speak to the topic. Counselor Sacks sits on Toronto City Council, serving Ward 11, University of Rosedale. She's done so since September 15th, 2022. She has numerous committee responsibilities, often relating to her background in environment and law. Chief among her appointments is the powerful Infrastructure and Environment Committee. She's also been appointed and serves on the Board of the Toronto Transit Commission and Toronto Hydro. She is a former and the last Environmental Commissioner of Ontario, holding that office from 2015 to 2019. Her work as Environmental Commissioner, the environmental watchdog of the Government of Ontario, was highly acclaimed, except by the progressive conservative government of 2018, which terminated the Office of Environmental Commissioner in 2019, after 25 years of its existence. Counselor Sacks holds a PhD in Environmental Law and Environmental Studies. She was awarded the Law Society Medal for Exemplary Leadership in Environmental Law, a Clean 50 Award, and an Osgood Hall Alumni Gold Key for Lifetime Achievement. At the University of Toronto, she is a Senior Fellow of Massey College, an adjunct faculty of the School of Environment. She is also the founder and principal of Sacks Facts, an environmental law and consultancy practice. These are but a few of her many accomplishments and many distinctions. Counselor Sacks and I were classmates at Osgood Hall Law School. When we attended law school, there was no course in environmental law, a sign of the times. The closest were courses on Natural Resources Law and Mining Law, which focused on resource extraction, not environmental conservation. Counselor Sacks then became a pioneer after graduation in the field of environmental law, one of the first lawyers in Ontario to practice exclusively in the area. She went on to become one of the first certified specialists in environmental law, establishing her own law firm specializing in environmental law. A very brave move at the time. I've known Counselor Sacks as a fearless and effective advocate. I've also known that she is passionately committed to environmental protection and environmental justice. I can also say that she's an avid cyclist, she cycled here this afternoon, canoeist, cross-country skier, and outdoor adventurer. Counselor Sacks has been deeply connected to the Nariva Congregation for many, many years. On her City of Toronto webpage, interestingly, she proudly relates that her synagogue is in the ward she serves. And for nearly 25 years, she led services at the Castleview Witchwood Long Term Care Facility. My uncle was a resident there, suffering from Alzheimer's. He participated in and benefited from the services led by Counselor Sacks, and I'm most grateful for that. I truly am. So indeed, it is very much a privilege for me to welcome Counselor Sacks to Holy Blossom Temple and to have the opportunity with you to learn from her this afternoon. Some housekeeping matters. Counselor Sacks will lead off with her presentation, will take questions following the presentation. As the session is being livestreamed, it's important that you come forward and ask your question at the microphone so that our viewers on the livestreaming can hear your question, as well as Dr. Sacks's response. We're scheduled to conclude at 2:45. Allow me two more minutes, please, to set the stage for the subject matter of this session. I'd like to do it by reading a medrash that I came across in preparation for the session, that I think beautifully expresses the idea that God needs people to tend the world. It reads as follows: "In the hour when the Holy One, blessed be he, created the first man, he took him and let him pass before all the trees of the Garden of Eden, and said to him, 'See my works, how fine and excellent they are. Now all that I have created, for you I have created. Think upon this, and do not corrupt and desolate my world; for if you corrupt it, there is no one to set it right after you.'" The Jewish view is that everything belongs to God. We are stewards of the earth to see that its produce is available for all God's children, from generation to generation, whether rich or poor. We are instructed not to waste. Property is a sacred trust given by God. People have custodial care of the earth, as opposed to its ownership and right of exploitation. So on this day, when an accounting of our behavior is taken, how are we doing? And on this day, as we resolve to do better, what can we do collectively and individually? And with those big questions, I turn this over to Counselor Sacks.
Thank you so much. Mark always prepares very thoroughly. The great gift of Yom Kippur is the chance, the possibility of a fresh start. Yom Kippur tells us, everybody has free will. Everybody has the power of choice. Our choices matter enormously. They have consequences, consequences that can affect life and death. And it's not too late to repent our old choices, no matter who we are and where we are in our life's journey, that we can still choose life instead. And to illustrate it, we tell the story of the Book of Jonah, which is one of the shortest books in the Jewish Bible. So I'm going to tell you the story. You're going to read it this afternoon anyway, but I'm going to tell it to you. And I have to tell you, the more I study this story, the less impressed I am with Jonah, but never mind. So the story begins with Jonah. Who's Jonah? We don't know. God speaks to Jonah and says, "Get up, go to Nineveh, that great city, and proclaim God's judgment, because their wickedness has come to me." Okay, so Jonah's in Israel. Nineveh is due east, in what is now Mosul, Iraq. And so what Jonah does is he immediately gets up and he goes in precisely the opposite direction. He goes down to the port of Jaffa, he gets into a boat, and he heads off to Tarshish, which is the far as west as you can get into the Mediterranean. Of course, he doesn't tell the sailors that he's running away from God. He just pays his fare, gets on board, goes down, lies down. Now, the poor sailors, they don't know what's happened to them, so they figure, okay, fine, they've got a passenger. They head off to sea, and immediately they get struck by an enormous storm, like a terrible storm, like an overwhelming storm, which is quickly putting their survival at risk. The whole ship is at risk of breaking up. And they are smart enough to recognize, there's something wrong here. This is not just a normal storm. There's something really wrong. And where the hell's this guy who just got on board? So when everyone is at risk, the captain has the right to insist that everyone be part of the solution. So he goes downstairs and he wakes up Jonah. He says, "What are you doing asleep? The whole ship's at risk. Come upstairs, call on your God, maybe we'll get some mercy here." Of course, Jonah doesn't do anything. And the storm gets worse and worse. So they cast lots to figure out who among us is responsible for this, because they know it's not natural. And the lot falls on Jonah. And they say, "Who are you? And what have you done?" And he says, "Oh, I'm a Hebrew. We worship the God of heaven and earth, who made the sea and everything else, and I'm running away and not doing what he said." He said, "Like, what do we have to do to stop this terrible storm so we don't all die?" Jonah, meanwhile, is not doing anything, right? He's not rowing, he's not baling, he's nothing. And he says, "Okay, you have to throw me into the sea." But the sailors don't want to be guilty of murder. And so they row harder and harder and harder, and they throw all their cargo, like their whole livelihood. They throw their livelihood into the sea, and they row harder and harder and harder. And the storm keeps getting worse and worse and worse, and Jonah doesn't do anything to help. So eventually, they say, "Please, God, don't hold us guilty. You're giving us no choice." And they pick up Jonah and they throw him into the ocean. Well, the Mediterranean Sea. And at that point, the storm stops. So the sailors make a vow. We don't hear what the vow is. In the meantime, now we have Jonah in the water. And God sends a very big fish, and the fish swallows Jonah. And for three days, that fish swims around with Jonah in its tummy. We don't find anything about how the fish feels about this. So eventually, Jonah starts to pray. So that's good. But he doesn't follow any of the advice that we get about how to repent for doing something wrong. He never apologizes, he never acknowledges what he did wrong, he never acknowledges how he ruined the lives of the sailors. He just recites some verses from the Psalms. He doesn't even make anything up. And he does this for a while, and eventually God has the fish spit him back out on land again. And then God comes again to Jonah and says, "Jonah, get up, go to Nineveh, and speak my judgment to them." So this time, he does. He goes to Nineveh. Now, Nineveh, I don't know if you folks remember about Nineveh. Nineveh was the capital of Assyria. We're told the Book of Jonah was written about the 8th century, and in the 8th century, Nineveh was the biggest city in the world. It had 120,000 people, an unimaginably large number. It was immensely powerful. It was also the biggest enemy of Israel. They were the ones who destroyed the northern kingdom. They were the ones who dispersed the 10 tribes. They were the ones who ravaged almost the whole land of Israel. The only thing they didn't do, which the Babylonians did, was actually conquer Jerusalem and burn it down. But they did everything else. So they were the biggest enemies of the Jews at the time, and immensely powerful. And, okay, so Jonah walks into Nineveh. It's a big city, three days' walk across. He walks one day's walk into the city, and he stands up on a soapbox and he says, "40 days and Nineveh will be overthrown." And then he gets down, and he doesn't say anything else. No details, no credentials. Personally, I wouldn't have found that a very persuasive speech. But then a miracle occurs. The people of Nineveh somehow all hear about his speech, and they all believe it, and they all decide to immediately mend their ways. And they all stop their business, and they take off their fancy clothes, and they put on sackcloth, and they stop the violence and the injustice. And the king hears about it, and the king has to rush to catch up with, to be a leader, right? Because the people have already moved. So the king gets off his throne and takes off his robe and puts on sackcloth, and orders that everybody, all the animals have to wear sackcloth too. Don't know how you explain this to a chicken. And then, nobody can eat, nobody can drink. They all pray, and maybe God will have mercy on them. And God does have mercy on them, and he doesn't destroy Nineveh. So meanwhile, what's happened to Jonah? Jonah has gone out of the city to sit down and watch, because, you know, he's said the whole city's going to be destroyed in 40 days. So he waits to see the destruction. And what happens? Nothing. Jonah is really grumpy, really, really grumpy. He said, "This is terrible. This is the worst thing ever. I wish I was dead." And anyway, so God makes a vine grow up over Jonah. He gives him shade, he's got a pretty place to sit. And for 24 hours, he's sitting in this beautiful place. He's very happy. And then God sends a worm, and the worm kills the vine, and the vine dies, and the sun beats down on him, and the wind blows on him, and he says, "I am so mad. I wish I could die." And God says, "Are you really so upset about this vine? I am so mad! Well, if you have pity over the vine, that you did nothing to grow, that lived for a day and died in a day, why shouldn't I have pity on 120,000 people who don't know right from wrong, and also all their animals?" And that's the end of the story. So let's think what this teaches us about repentance and making a fresh start. First of all, what about Jonah? Well, honestly, he's a pretty mediocre hero. He only had one thing to do, and it's easier than everything I've got to do. He had to go to a strange city, walk one day in, say one sentence, and then he was done. And it was completely clear what he was supposed to do. It was within his power to do it. And instead, he ran in the completely opposite direction, created enormous adverse consequences, almost all of which fell on somebody not him, which he did nothing to remedy. And when he did decide to do the right thing after all, he still had the opportunity. It wasn't any harder than before. And what's really crazy is it worked completely. I mean, as somebody who tries to persuade people to change behavior all the time, I can tell you, this almost never happens. And when it worked perfectly, he was so grumpy, he wanted to die. And he complained, and he complained, and he complained, and really, all the way to the end of the book, he's complaining and whining. Who thinks this is a great role model for us to copy? Well, fortunately, there are other role models in this story, which justifies us still talking about it. So let's think about the people of Nineveh. So God tells us in the first verse, they're wicked, they're terribly wicked. And of course, on the point of view of Israel, they were terribly wicked. They, you know, destroyed most of the land of Israel and most of the Jews, but okay. They besieged Jerusalem, trapped Hezekiah like a caged bird. Anybody been in Jerusalem and seen where Hezekiah tore down the houses to build the wall? Well, that was because the Assyrians were besieging Jerusalem. He extracted huge amounts of tribute. They worshipped Ishtar, the charismatic goddess. So much of the Bible is against God's worship. This is all against Assyria. And into this great city walks a total stranger, probably stinking of fish. Right? With no credentials, no local connections. He's raving about a God they don't know, and they're about to send out a destruction. No details of what they're doing wrong, what they had to change, why they should believe him, or anything else. And still, everybody listened, everybody heeded the warning, and they did repent, and they were forgiven. So one bottom line of this is, if Nineveh could repent, anybody can repent. And if Nineveh could get a better future, anybody can get a better future, even us. But the key thing that Nineveh did, that we are not doing, is Nineveh listened when they got a clear warning. It was a very short warning. We have a very clear warning. It's a very long warning. The clear warning I'm talking about is from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. You knew I was going to get there eventually. All right, this is the result of 30 years of volunteer work by tens of thousands of the world's best scientists, who have devoted their days, and their nights, and their weekends, and their holidays to making sure that we all know what the consequences are of keeping burning fossil fuels, and what's going to happen, and what we have to do if we don't actually want to destroy the world. They've told us with clarity, they've told us with ferocity, global heating is the greatest threat we in nature face. It's going to dominate the lives of every young person. Anybody here got a young person they love? This is going to be the biggest factor that dominates their choices. They've told us that keeping burning fossil fuels, gasoline, aviation fuel, so-called natural gas, means enormous and perhaps overwhelming suffering and destruction. Because of the IPCC, we know it's a, global heating's a threat multiplier. Whatever you worry about, it makes every other problem harder. It makes hunger harder, it makes war harder, it makes conflict harder. It destroys infrastructure, it triggers wars, it forces migration. It's the greatest threat to human health in the world. And it's happening mostly because we are burning vast amounts of gasoline, and diesel, and aviation fuel, and so-called natural gas. And we know all of these things. I mean, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, right? Everything I've said about this, you already knew when you got in here, right? Everybody knows this. And we know it because the world did have a Nineveh moment a generation ago. In 1988, James Hansen from NASA went to the US Congress and told them, based on 130, 40 years of science by then, that global warming meant putting the whole basis of modern civilization at risk, and that it was caused by burning fossil fuels. And if we didn't stop doing it, we were in for really major civilization upending trouble. And in 1992, four years later, which is bloody well instant, every country in the world agreed to a treaty, the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, that we would all work together so that we would not allow global heating to ever reach 2 degrees, because even in 1988, we already knew that the consequences would be catastrophic. And one of the things that, I mean, I was there in 1992 when this treaty was reached. One of the things that was agreed was, this is a really complicated problem. We need to know how fast it's moving, and what we need to do, and what the consequences are. We need a scientific body that will give all of us, all the countries of the world, the oil producers, the others, reliable consensus scientific information. And that group is the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. And because of that moment, we know pretty much exactly what we're doing wrong and what the consequences are already, and what they are going to be. They've done their job, much better than Jonah did. They've told us in thousands and thousands of pages, on excruciating detail, on anything you want to know, why what we are doing means our destruction. And they've told us how to fix it. But the only thing was, they were maybe too optimistic. They thought it was going to take a lot longer before we saw what we've seen this summer. The fires, and the floods, and the drought, and the heat, and the storm, and the wind. Even climate scientists are frightened by how quickly the damage is accelerating. Look at the mental, physical, and financial exhaustion of places that have been pummeled repeatedly, including British Columbia, and Nova Scotia, and parts of northern Canada. And look at the rising despair of the world's children. They know we're burning their future. Just ask them. So we have a much clearer warning than Nineveh ever got. But we are not taking it very seriously. In 1988, when James Hansen went to the US Congress, the level of carbon dioxide in the outside air was 350 parts per million. Some of you have probably heard of an organization called 350.org. Some of you, I see a few nods. Well, they picked that name because that number is a magic number. Based on everything we know, it's the highest level of CO2 we can have in the atmosphere for long and have a stable climate. Have a world with coral reefs and mountain glaciers and food crops that don't crash. Anybody think we're still there? We're over 420 now. And we're driving it up faster and faster. And every single year, we're burning more fossil fuels than we did the year before. Every year, we're driving towards disaster faster than we did before, even though we know the consequences. It's as if the people of Nineveh, as soon as Jonah was gone, got up from the ashes, brushed themselves off, and went back to everything they'd been doing before. And maybe they did, because we know that 50 or 60 years later, Nineveh was destroyed after all. There isn't any legitimate scientific doubt about global heating or the consequences of fossil fuels. The scientists of the world, except for a very few, generally can be proven to be bought off, they agree. off, they agree. It's here. It's very, very bad. It's us. There's still something we can do about it. And every single time we burn gasoline, or natural gas, or any other fossil fuel, we make it worse, and the consequences last a long time. So a car going by on the road out there is putting out carbon dioxide. Anybody know how long that carbon dioxide will keep on heating the earth? Thousand years. So it's not just our kids, and their kids, and their grandkids, and their grandkids. That goes on building up cumulative heat for at least a thousand years. And that'll make life tough for all living things. And in the meantime, the oil and gas companies are making record profits, and the stock markets are trading their proven reserves, which are at least three times larger than what would take to clearly exhaust the entire rest of the world's carbon budget. And they continue to pour more money into finding and developing even more, and your pension plan is probably investing in it. If all of you have Canada pension, I would assume, and they're one of the worst. And our governments keep subsidizing them and permitting them as if we were all blind. Look at Trans Mountain, which is also not only going to help destroy the world, but also lose us all money for its entire operating life. So however frightened you are of what's ahead, I don't think you're frightened enough. If you haven't changed anything material about your life, you are not frightened enough, and you don't care enough about those young people that you said you care about. Because we do have the power to make better choices, and we're not making them. For almost everyone, it's closer than you think. It's worse than you think. I used to ask audiences to care about climate change only because of that young person that they love, but probably none of us are going to die on time either. It's here. The catastrophic floods, the winds, the fires, the food price increases, the insurance price increases, the things we used to think were going to happen a generation from now, they're here already. We're pretty lucky here in Toronto. We're one of the luckiest places in the world. We're going to have food and water longer than most places. But do you think the rest of the world isn't going to notice? Think how much trouble we have right now coping with refugees coming in the hundreds. What will we do when they come in the hundreds of millions? And yet, even here, this summer, people have died, hundreds have lost their homes, thousands have had to flee, millions breathe toxic smoke from climate fuel disasters. The farmers are struggling. July was sweltering, but even April's heat wave, I don't know if you remember April, but I had constituents going to the hospital with heat stroke in April. Because among other things, our bailiff requires the heat to be on in April. The most vulnerable always suffer the most, poor people in poor places, children. But I also put it to you that global heating is a specifically important issue for Jews. And here's three reasons, and we'll probably come up with more. The easy ones are the Jewish law, the moral ones, right? We have an obligation to repair the world, to leave it better than we found it. We're commanded to be stewards of the natural world, just as Mark said in his introduction. There's no one to come after us to fix what we destroy. We have balateh heat, the commandment not to waste, not to destroy anything without good reason. So, we've got some ethical Jewish legal reasons. Then there's Israel. Leaving aside the current Israeli government, which I'm just not going to think about at the moment, but we have an ancestral connection with the land of Israel. For many of us, it's important. And Israel is one of the places that is going to suffer the soonest. It's going to be grilled by heat. Water is already stressed. It's surrounded by countries who are underwater stressed. The threat to Israel is enormous. Desperate migrants, sea level rise, at least one study that I saw projected that heat alone would cost Israel 90% of its GDP this century, if it's inhabitable at all. And if that isn't enough, let's think about antisemitism. So, those of you who are following the Torah reading this morning, you know we had the story of the scapegoat. Anybody remember? Goat, scapegoat? Okay. So, who are the number one scapegoats in generally Christian and sometimes Muslim societies for the last several thousand years? It's us. And that's still true here. The largest number of hate crimes in Toronto is still against Jews. Grossly disproportionate, doesn't get any press, but I get the stats. And just a few weeks ago, we had the 90th anniversary of the Christie Pitts Riot. Does anybody need me to explain what this is? No? Okay. So, this is the largest race riot in Canadian history. And it happened at Christie Pitts in 1933, when people were frightened. So many people were in deep economic distress. We were at the depths of the recession. People were losing what little grass they had. And when they are frightened and losing, they need somebody to turn on, they need a scapegoat. And usually, who is that? And we are already being blamed. I don't know if you've noticed, how many of the climate wildfires have been blamed by the American nutty right on Jews with space lasers? Anybody bring a space laser today? We have an enormous amount of antisemitism couched as being anti-Georgosaurus. Jews are already being blamed as people become frightened. And when there is more disruption, and more loss, and more fear, are we safe? So I think you should take this seriously. I really think you should take this seriously. Now, I spend much too much time reading climate science, and when I look honestly at it, it's hard not to despair. But we can't afford to despair. We just can't. So I cling to the promise of Yom Kippur. It's not too late for a fresh start. If Nineveh could do it, we could do it. So much has been lost already. The dawn chorus of the birds in the forests are gone. Most of the coral reefs are sick. So much of the natural world is gone. But it's not too late to make a difference in what's ahead. And the good news is, we do have all the technology we need to shift to the new climate economy. We can leave fossil fuels in the ground where they do no harm. This isn't an accident. It's because of a generation of hard work. It wasn't just the IPCC that started in 1992. There was also an enormous amount of work by innovators, and regulators, and financiers to develop this jaw-dropping collapse in the price of solar, and wind, and batteries, and many sources of renewable energy, so that we can now make clean electricity cheaper without using fossil fuels. And if we can make clean electricity cheaper, we can electrify transportation, and we can electrify buildings, and we don't need to keep using fossil fuels. So, personal action is a good place to start. It's a terrible place to stop, but it is a good place to start. So, if you drove here in a gas guzzler, it's not too late to change how you get around. If you burn gas in a leaky house, it's really not hard to change how you heat your house, insulate it, put on a sweater. If you fly frequently or far, it's really not hard to fly less. And if you eat beef, it is not hard to treat it as a luxury. Keep it for holidays, special occasions, Shabbat. And I picked those four things because the very last thing I did when I was Environmental Commissioner of Ontario was I put out a report that the government had refused to release about what are the things that Ontarians do which have the worst climate impacts. And for the most Ontarians, four things do half the damage. And it's got nothing to do with your blue box. Driving, we drive enormously more than in 1992, and we drive worse vehicles. We drive bigger vehicles, and we drive them farther. And we, you'll be, you know, it's always good to be number one. We in Canada, we are number one. We drive the most climate polluting vehicles in the entire world. Because we like to buy big things. Heating, leaking homes, most of our homes leak heat like crazy, and we've got inefficient ways of heating them. We fly a lot, and we eat beef. And those four, just those, are half the climate damage that we do. It's a lot easier to change those now than it was when I stopped eating beef 50 years ago. And there's lots more people doing it with you. So that's personal action, great place to start. But we cannot stop there. We cannot solve this problem with individual action. And I'm not just here to make you feel guilty. Feeling guilty doesn't get much of anything accomplished. What we really need is collective action, and collective action makes personal action more possible. So, it matters the most, and again, you can do a lot as individuals, and certainly as an organization, you're a big shul, you've got lots of makris here. So, can you and your colleagues, if you invest in oil companies, stop? Stop funding the destruction of the world. If you're blindly trusting your pension plan, don't do it anymore. They need to hear that you care about this. I had the Ontario Municipal Employees Retirement System up in front of my committee this week at City Council, and the fact that we are asking them questions is causing them to change how they behave, their behavior. And I asked them on the public record, does it matter if you hear from your members? Absolutely it does. And that's true for every pension plan. They need to hear that you care about this. You need to ask them questions. And if you need help, shift actions, a little charity that teaches you how to be effective with your pension plan. If you've been voting for anti-climate politicians, like our current premier, it's not too late to support somebody better. There are lots of better people. If you're ignoring what happens at City Hall, you shouldn't. While we're doing their matters, but we need to hear that the public cares about this. I can only do so much by myself. People have to hear folks like you. And if you have time to show up, show up. It makes a big difference. So, a lot has already been lost. But it's not too late to give our kids a better future. We're not obliged to complete the work, but neither are we free to desist from it. So, what I suggest is, start tomorrow. First of all, be an honest accountant. Be honest with yourself. There's lots of tools online for how you count your carbon footprint. Figure out where your biggest lumps are, what you're going to do about it. Then pick something that you can do regularly. You know, if you're out of shape, you don't start with a marathon. Maybe you start with a walk around the block. So, pick something that you can do, that you will do over and over again. Pick something that has other benefits too, it's not pure pain. Do something that feels good, or saves you money, or brings joy, and do it with somebody else, right? Jewish tradition always tells us, find a companion to study with. If you want to go on walks regularly, I mean, a lot of us get dogs, because then the dog makes us go for a walk, and then we've got somebody to walk with. So having somebody to do it with, having somebody to chat with about it, having somebody that you need to show up for, that allows you to do something that you can keep going, and it makes your life better. So, there is still so much we can save, but you have to choose life.
Are you ready for questions?
Sure.
Sure. Do we have questions? We have lots of time, good time for discussion. I've got one for you. You've been essentially advocating for what amounts to transformative change. And you've done that in your practice, now you're on the legislative side at council. What kind of transformative change do you have on your agenda as a member of Toronto City Council? And where do you see Toronto City Council going with respect to how it's addressing the challenge you presented?
Well, one of the early things that Mayor Chow did was she named me council's environmental champion. And that comes with zero dollars and zero staff, but it does give me permission to push. And I'm pushing. So we're actually doing a lot that isn't getting really much attention. Well, for example, in May, we passed, as part of the municipal code, we made it part of the Law of Toronto, a binding carbon budget, first one in North America, that is going to require us to do an honest accounting to you about the consequences of our choices for our climate future. We have, on Friday, we launched the very first team of city staff doing their fieldwork on bicycles. You know, eight months ago, I challenged the fleet folks to, we were paid an extra $100 million last year because oil prices went up, and we can't afford that $100 million. So I said, "Well, what are we doing to cut our use of vehicles if things that don't need cars all the time?" And of course, it turns out that for a lot of the work that our field staff do, bikes are faster. They're cheaper, they're healthier, you don't have to spend a lot of time looking for a place to park, they don't contribute to congestion, people find it easier to relate to somebody on a bicycle, you see more things from a bicycle. And I've got two other departments I'm kicking to try to follow suit. We have a motion I passed this last week, God, I can't remember what week it was, to finally look at following Vancouver's lead, to cut our purchases of beef by 20%. Vancouver did it two years ago. We serve 7 million meals a year. It's not healthy for people to eat as much beef as we're serving. There are vegetarian chefs volunteering to teach our collective chefs how to cook differently. It saves money, it's healthier, and it's better for the climate. So that's something we're starting the road down. We are doing enormous work on making it safer for pedestrians and cyclists to get around the city, and that's something I spend a huge amount of time on. We are moving towards mandatory retrofit standards for existing buildings, because our existing buildings, as I said, leak heat, and we have to burn a lot less. I'm pestering them all the time. But I'm getting a pretty receptive audience with the new crop of councillors. It's better, right? And we have a lot of people who care about the future, know enough to know that it's a problem. I'm working to try to get, working towards free transit for high school students. Kingston started that 10 years ago, and it's been transformative. If kids in high school learn how to get around on the transit, they have independence, they don't have to need to pester their parents to drive them, they're on a more equal basis, the kids who have cars and the kids who don't have cars, and they then keep that habit afterwards. And so Kingston's been able to increase their ridership 75%, reduce inequities between rich kids and poor kids, and reduce their climate impact, and also somewhat reduce congestion. So we could do that too. We don't have the money yet, but I'm starting some small steps. So there's just a lot of different things we can do, every individual step is small. But anything I've got passed, we've got almost every time, because somebody bothered to show up, sometimes many people, to get the Young Street Bike Lane passed, nearly 9,000 people signed a petition, and 60 people showed up to depute, and I wouldn't have got it passed without it. It really matters if you show up.
Questions? Yes, sir. Please come to the mic.
Thank you for speaking to us about the environment. I really appreciate it. I've been very active trying to persuade City Hall to ban two-stroke gas engines. I feel like I'm up against a wall, and interestingly enough, Public Health declared it a nuisance. I'm not, you know, I may be taking it out of context.
Do you know that I got council to agree to move towards a ban of two-stroke engines two months ago?
I know that.
Okay, good.
But I'm afraid that staff are going to sabotage it. What is, do you think that is Mayor Chow, and I know you are pushing, but I still am skeptical that the city will actually enact a ban and do it quickly, and not, you know, push it down the road another 16 years? That's my question.
Okay. Well, um, were you there after that? Were you one of the people who spoke?
Bro, yeah, I, I was speaking from a hospital at the time.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Well, I don't know what staff are going to say. Some of the staff are enthusiastic, the, the Environment and Climate Staff. I mean, they're with me pushing this. Parks and Rec, not so much.
Can I just ask what's a two-stroke engine?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you for asking if we're not clear. So the little, like leaf blowers, a lot of outboard motors. So a car engine has four strokes when they burn gasoline. And that way they keep most of the fumes inside and they burn most of the fumes. A two-stroke engine is just cheap and wasteful. So they squish the gas and a whole batch of it just goes out. So you waste a lot of gas. You create a lot of toxic air pollution. And they're terribly noisy. Yeah. So the climate pollution noise and criteria air contaminants. And the thing is that we haven't needed them for years. There are four-stroke engines. There are electric engines. If you actually need a leaf blower instead of a rake, there are lots of electric ones. So we don't need them anymore, but they're cheap to buy. And some people really like the loud noise. Some people like to, oh, I'm a big man. I make this big noise, I wake up all my neighbors. I don't understand it myself, but there we are. Anyway, so in answer to your question, will it, what will happen when staff come back? I mean, I don't have a crystal ball. I suspect we're going to hear two main objections, both having to do with money. One is that the departments haven't been allocated money to buy replacements. And the second, that it will take staff to do all the education in the hand holy and that will take money as well. And we're going into the most difficult budget we've ever had. So I don't know how that's going to go. But, and it's also true that they're not, they're not the most noisy thing in the city and they're not the most polluting thing in the city. And so it's hard to say we should do this when there are bigger things. But when we can't do the bigger things, I think we should at least do this. Anyway, I'm trying, I don't know. But having people show up when it comes back to council, very, very important. And, you know, sign, there's all these lovely folks. Sign up more people for your group. Get more emails coming in.
Yes, please, from the microphone.
So thank you for speaking. I'm in your ward and I was thrilled that, that you won and you're there. I, I heard you say that you're on the TTC board.
I'm on many boards.
So, and this is a big concern for me, the TTC, because I feel like service levels have been going down when we need them to go up. And fewer and fewer condos have parking spaces. People need it to get around. Our city is growing by about a hundred thousand people a year. But we're seeing that when the TTC is unreliable, people get Ubers, it clogs the streets. So can you speak to how we're going to get the TTC to be more efficient?
Well, I'm not going to agree with you that this TTC is inefficient. I will agree that we've had service cuts last year and for the first half of this year, although they're all being reversed this fall. So we're taking the money, the TTC board is taking the money. Let me back up a step. Once CrossLinks opens, if it ever opens, it's going to cost us a lot of money. And so we set aside forty-two million dollars for this year to run the two metro links, the Finch Line and Egerton. But since they can't finish anything, we still have that money. We're using that money to restore service this fall. And that's why service has been increasing across the system this fall. What we still have is an enormous problem with construction. So, and, and my ward is one of the worst of the city in terms of construction. We have Blair Street torn up. We have an unbelievable number of condos being built. We have water main projects. Admittedly, we need to fix the water mains because the water mains are, in many cases, a hundred years old and have to be replaced. And of the TTC elevator projects, six of the worst ones are in our ward and are all trying to happen simultaneously. So we have a big problem with that. But I agree with you that we need the TTC to grow and that frequency of service is incredibly important. The most important things in order are service, safety, and then fares. And I'm working on them in that order. So, but what we, we have a big problem.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
And reliability. So I know you, you take your bike a lot.
Yep.
I drive, but when I'm going downtown or if it's somewhere that's accessible by a TTC, I'm on the TTC at least once a week. It's like there's a, there's a shutdown. Sorry, there's a delay. It's going to be twenty minutes. It's going to be a network.
Yeah, no, you're right. And, and the reason for that is we're in a mental health crisis. So we have, the number of disturbed individuals who take out their rage on the TTC is astonishing. You might have heard a week or so ago, a man attacked a racialized woman bus driver. She didn't open the door the second he wanted it. And so he stood in front of the bus and screamed abuse at her. And then he got on the bus and screamed abuse at her for half an hour. So I wonder, of course, well, where is the backup? So we got a briefing note. Where was the backup? There were, I think, eleven other simultaneous incidents across the TTC. One was a car smashed into a bus. I think everything else was addicted, disturbed people stopping the train, the bus, whatever. And Ford, our premier, you may remember, he gives a billion dollars a year to cars by making license stickers free. And where's that money come from? He's underfunding mental health. He doesn't fund addiction treatment. He doesn't fund mental health. And so we have this epidemic of people out of their minds on the TTC. That's why you're getting all those delays. It's not the employees, it's not the equipment. Very rarely is it the equipment. Judging from what I'm seeing in the notes day after day, it's the public. So we are, I mean, we are, the new chair is setting up a safety committee. We're doing everything we can. We're looking at transit systems around North America. But after COVID, COVID broke a lot of people. And COVID broke a lot of systems. And in 2020, when the shelters were closed and people went to the TTC because it was the only thing that was open. And they keep going to the TTC. And besides, there's a way, place you can find people you can scream at if you want to scream at someone. So we know it's a problem. It's especially a problem for women. And we're doing the best we can.
I, I noticed on the Toronto website, there's a transform TO strategy.
Yes, there is. That's the climate plan.
Right. And speaking of transit, I noted two objectives. One being thirty percent of registered vehicles in Toronto to be electric. And the other seventy-five percent of school work trips under five kilometers to be walked, biked, or by transit. Firstly, is Toronto planning in some way to incentivize the use of electric vehicles? And secondly, not everybody is able to bike or walk comfortably, especially in winter. How do you strike the balance between those objectives and the inherent challenges of a population that isn't always able to be mobile sufficiently to walk or bike?
Well, as a senior with all kinds of joint issues and chronic pain, I can tell you an electric assist bicycle is a great invention. It is by far the best way of getting around downtown. And if there's ice on the ground and I can't bike, I take the TTC. And yes, and then I get angry if there's a delay. But anyway, that's, that we talked about already. We don't have money to be handing out to people and especially to buy cars. It's only the richer part of the population on the whole that has cars. Half the people in my ward don't even have cars. So we're, we're not going to be handing out money to people to buy cars. We are spending public money building out charging infrastructure. But the main reason I think people are going to get out of their cars is that the congestion is going to be just so unbearable that people are going to do something else. It's just, it, I think twice I've tried to drive to the office because I needed to go somewhere afterwards with a car. And it was a totally miserable, horrible experience, even though I get free parking at City Hall. There was just, you can't pay me to do it. It's just not worth it. So much better to bike. Even the TTC is better. So, and we are into at least a decade of atrocious congestion. Although, having said that, I've been reading Mike Malloy's history of the mayors of Toronto. And since nineteen thirty-one, at least every second mayor's top priority has been these three things, which will sound familiar to you. Traffic congestion is terrible. There isn't enough affordable housing. And we need more tax money from the provincial government. Do any of these sound familiar to you? They have always been the story in Toronto. They are still the story in Toronto. At least the good news is we are no longer debating whether women should be allowed to sunbathe in public. So this is, this is a good thing. And, but, the transform TO is, it's the thing I spend most of my time on. How do we achieve transform TO? And so wider sidewalks, we don't have enough room on the sidewalk. We're actually, one of the ways that Toronto is different from other North American cities is more people walk now. We have busier sidewalks than most North American cities. And we don't have enough room on our sidewalks. Anybody here use Avenue Road from time to time? Okay, so you know, we don't have, we don't even have the bare minimum sidewalks on Avenue Road because our sidewalks were chopped in half fifty years ago to give extra lanes to cars. So we're taking those lanes back. We're going to widen the sidewalks. We're going to make it safer for walkers. I'm doing a lot of work on sidewalk safety, including keeping the food carriers from biking on the sidewalk. We're doing a lot to improve cycling safety. We're building out better cycling networks. I'm getting them maintained better. Doesn't look it, I know, but they are getting better. I'm doing more to enforce the idiots that stop their cars in the bike lanes, which make them dangerous. We're getting better attention in construction sites. So making it safer is one of the first things. We're slowing speed limits. So all the speed limits in my ward were slowed. We're increasing enforcement so that, we're going to be increasing parking costs. It's going to be more expensive to park a car in the city. We're going to be making it better and safer to walk and cycle and hopefully take TTC. And less convenient and more expensive to drive. And that way, we're hoping to help shift people. And in the meantime, there's all sorts of gadgets. And if you look what people are riding now, there's, there's all kinds of things. There's every number of things with two wheels and one wheel and three wheels and four wheels. And we see the courier companies have now noticed that it's much more efficient downtown to deliver stuff by bike. I don't know if you've seen all the FedEx bike courier things that they're delivering with. And they find that they can deliver six times as fast as a van because the van, A, gets stuck in traffic and B, can't park. So we are moving the incentives. But we also need people to do it voluntarily. The fact that we're building all these buildings without parking is also creating a culture. The people in that building, at least in my ward, I'm making sure they can't get park, street parking anywhere else. They, if they want parking, they're going to have to pay for it at a private lot. And most of them, I think, are not going to do that. They're going to actually take the TTC or walk or ride one of those unicycle things. And so we'll see more and more people getting around without cars and it'll be faster. That's what the transition that Copenhagen went through. They only did it because they were broke. They couldn't afford to keep building roads. It was much cheaper to build bike lanes. And the people couldn't afford to keep buying cars because the city was broke. It was much cheaper to buy a bike. And once it was cheaper and more convenient and safe to get around by bike, most people do. Not because they want to save the world, because it's cheaper and faster and more convenient. And we need to go in the same direction. I'm doing what I can.
You spoke of Toronto's revenue challenges. And you spoke about seeking new powers of taxation. Taxation can be used for the purpose of incentivizing desirable behavior and penalizing undesirable behavior. Are you thinking about using taxation as a way of altering or facilitating behavioral change with respect to environment?
All the time.
How so?
Well, the parking levy is one of the ones I started first. We are going to have a parking levy. I am hoping to have the revenue designated for the TTC. We need it for service and safety and, and also to provide some fare support. The, and that does both things. It provides revenue that we desperately need and it also starts to level the playing field. When it's cheaper to drive and park than to take the TTC, we're paying people to do something that's bad for the city and bad for the world. So we need to rebalance those. I made a motion this week, or last week, to increase parking fines. That we fine people four hundred and twenty-five dollars if they get on the TTC without a ticket. What do we fine people if they park without paying the meter? Thirty bucks? Like, it's nuts, right? It's totally nuts. It's cheaper to park illegally at a city meter than it is to go into a commercial lot. So we're paying people to behave illegally. This is nutty. So I've, we're going to move that up. We're going to have a report, I think this fall, on stormwater. So if you have a giant parking lot, all the stormwater that falls on that runs into the sewer, hot, fast, dirty, and helps flood poop into the lake. This is just a terribly bad idea. And the people with the parking lots pay nothing for it. Who's paying for it? People use the, a lot of water, like laundromats, who aren't causing the problem. So we need to rebalance that. We move, need to move cost from people who use water to people who have hard surfaces that are flooding our sewer system. And so that, that's something I wrote a report about when I was Commissioner in 2016 called Paying For What We Need. It's, we still have to pay for what we need and I'm hoping to move it there later this year.
Any other questions?
I have a question about walking. I like to walk a lot. I walk all over the city. I walk up and down Young Street. But what I see, and you can correct me if I'm not correct, I see proposals being approved with very little setback. I live at Young and St. Clair. The streets are crowded right now. The sidewalks are inadequate. Yet we have proposals to put up more and more housing, more and more people. I did see on Lower York Street the other day where there is really nice setbacks and light, big white sidewalks. But somehow, somewhere around here, the sidewalks are narrow. Big projects are being approved. You want to get those people out walking. What's your plan?
Okay, so thank you very much for asking. You should come to my committee. I push for better setbacks all the time. So every developer that I meet, I tell them I'm looking for three things. I'm looking for better public realm, which includes better sidewalks, better parks. I'm looking for ground floor animation, so they can't just have a pure residential building where there's nothing that serves anybody who doesn't live in the building. And I'm looking for the sustainability of the building. I'm looking to get gas out of the units. I'm looking for the energy cost of operating the building. I'm looking for embodied carbon. I'm looking for diversion of demolition waste. So I'm pushing all of those. And the planners that work with me, we don't approve anything without setbacks. We have the one problem we have, and this is a constant pitch battle between me and the Heritage Department. The Heritage Department wants to keep old buildings exactly where they are. So there's one on Elm Street that is nothing to look at, but is apparently one of the oldest nothings in the downtown. And it's sitting very close to the sidewalk and very close to, and impinges on a laneway. We have to move it out of the way of the laneway for, and Heritage admits this because the fire trucks have to be able to get through the laneway. So they're agreeing we can move the building sideways, but they're giving me a pitch battle on whether we can move it back so that we have wide enough sidewalks. But leaving aside the Heritage Department, I always get wider sidewalks. Other councillors do their own things. I can't tell them what to do. But you can write your councillor and talk about it. They need to hear from their constituents. It's the most important thing. They need to hear from their constituents that that matters. Could also join Walk Toronto. They do a good job advocating. Anybody else?
Yes, please.
Hi. Hi. So just as a longtime cycle commuter, I want to thank you because it is getting better. And it has been safer the past couple of years. I really feel a difference. So, so as long as I've been cycle commuting, I've been a provincial public servant. And so now I'm, I'm working on climate change policy at the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks. And it's, it's a new area for me. And I have a group of people who have worked in climate policy for a long time. It's been a hard few years. And I'm some curious, kind of maybe back with your environmental commissioner hat on, but what do you see as being most key for the province to do in the next? Like, I'm just looking, you know, there was cancellation of cap and trade. There were a lot of things that, that people had put a lot of time and work into and trying to look at, at what look at, at what, looking ahead. Just on the emissions side, what are your thoughts on the provincial role? What could be done?
Well, I wrote, I think, fi- four or five reports on that.
Yes.
Yes. I mean, the short answer is that everything Ford has done on everything I care about has, almost without exception, been disastrously bad, including Highway 413. So the most important thing he could do would be cancel 413, because that exacerbates sprawl and sprawl is our tar sands. That's the number one, you don't have any say on that, but that is the most important thing. But, okay, let's start with the building code. We have a formal commitment from the province that by the end of summer, they would put the green building standards into the building code. Guess what? He didn't do it. But if you do it, it will have a lot of advantages. Among other things, it means that the currency of the standard will be by the date of the building permit and not the date of the site plan. Because now, the current system allows a lot of obsolete buildings to still be built, and we can't stop it. So if you have any say on that one?
I don't have say in any of that.
I know you don't, but you understand. I mean, the, the province has most of the power, right? The federal government gets most of the attention on climate, the province has most of the power. The old joke always is, the federal government has the money, the province has the power, the city has the problems. And that's basically true. But if the province would just let the cities get out of our way, give us the authority we need to do the things, you know, so many of us have pledged climate action, and we want to do it, and whenever we turn, we're, we're staring in the face of the, well, the province won't let us do this, and the province won't let us do that. So that would be huge. You know, the Energy Board is also something you don't control, but getting the, the Energy Board back, they were just about ready to have a whole series of useful rules before Ford trashed everything. And so the, all the conservation programs, the electricity conservation programs, which save us money, by the way, Ford canceled, virtually all of them. He canceled a lot of the, even the gas conservation programs. So, I mean, I'd have to go back and look, but I would suspect that most of the stuff in my reports is still current. Good luck.
We're, we're coming close to the end of our allotted time. I have one last question for you. Judaism instills in us an obligation to convey our knowledge from generation to generation. What thoughts do you have about the lessons that our generation should be taking from the current environmental crisis? And what should we be imparting as lessons to be learned for our children? And also, are there lessons we can learn from our children? And are we listening to them? What are your thoughts?
Oh, a nice, simple question.
I know you're able to do it.
Well, as I look around the room, a lot of you remember 1970. And in 1970, millions of people turned out on the streets for environmental action. And we scared the governments, and they did change. We got Ministries of the Environment around the world, including here. We got Clean Air Act and Clean Water Act in the US Congress. It's hard to think of the US Congress doing anything positive, but I mean, they did a lot of stuff because there were millions of people in the streets saying this is important to us. And in 2019, we had millions of people in the street for climate action, led by the kids, but we didn't show up again this year. We had thousands this year. So looking for ways to support Fridays for Future and the kids, because it is their future we're burning, I think that's important. But I think it's also worth telling them that, you know, just in the same way that the King of Nineveh had to scurry and try to catch up to get ahead of his people because they had already heard the message and decided to take action, and then the king rushed, it's the same now. If people will stand up and say this is important to us, the leaders will run to get ahead. We've shown we can do it. We just, we need to do it again, we need to do it louder, we need to do it faster, we need to do it with more urgency, but we have shown we know how. And I think if we listen also to how frightened they are, maybe that'll give us a bit more backbone that we can all use, because we have to do things that, that are hard, but at least we've got someone to do it for. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was, was absolutely wonderful. Councillor Sax, I want to thank you for your absolutely excellent presentation. It was brilliantly presented through the framework of the story of the Book of Jonah, and how appropriate for us today as we account for our transgressions and resolve forbetterment. As Jonah, we are confronted with a difficult message that has to be delivered, heard, and responded to. We cannot hope to row away to a distant place to seek escape, escape and sanctuary. We have to make difficult decisions in the real world, in real time, for ourselves, for our children, and our children's children. I want to thank all of you as well for your attendance. Thank you for your presence online, as well as presence here. Thank you for your questions. It's been a fascinating afternoon. Thank you all. Thank you again, Councillor Sax.
And I hope to see you at council.
And an administrative note, closing message. The mincha service begins in the main sanctuary at 3:30 PM. Yiscah will begin at approximately 5:15. Neela in the main sanctuary and the family Neela service in the Mishkan will both begin at approximately 6:30 PM, followed by Havedala, Under the Stars, on the Bathurst Street Plaza, with honey cake and sweet wine for everyone. Thank you. Mashanatova.